I'm to order and it's six o'clock for the Cape Canaveral Planning and Zoning Meeting. And, okay, Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. General Corrigan.
Here.
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 Okay, okay, we have a quorum. The next item is public participation. And any member of the public may come forward, identify yourself, and speak about what is on your mind, but it won't be an agenda item and we won't make any decisions about it. So anybody here wants to talk before we get started, come forward, identify yourself for the record.
Don Willis, 8984 Port of Del Rio Drive. I just wanted to come and thank the board for your volunteerism and for everything that you're doing. You, I know how much time it takes from you. I appreciate it very, very much for the research that you do and for the decisions that you've passed along to City Council. So I wanted to just thank you all for your effort and for your volunteerism. I appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very nice of you, Don. Thank you. Anyone else? I only had one card. Okay, moving along. Old business. I don't think we have any. It's all new business. And we'll go right into the board matters of approving the meeting minutes of last time. You have before you the minutes of the last meeting. Are there any changes or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to recommend approval.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Nancy General Corrigan, I second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Would you call the roll, please?
For the approval.
For the approval.
For?
For approval.
All right. How do we pronounce your name? Rennie?
Renee.
Renee. Got it. Just want to be correct. All right. We've called the roll. We're all here. We're ready to do business. That takes us into... First item on the agenda is to look at consideration of ordinance XX 2023 to amend city of Cape Canaveral comprehensive land, future land use element, and establish a mixed-use land use. And David, or who's taking us through here? You?
Yes, sir. I can, I can speak to this item.
Tell us your name for the record.
Kyle Harris. I am the Senior Planner for the City of Cape Canaveral. All right.
Kyle?
K-Y-L-E. Yes.
Great. Okay. Go ahead.
All right. So we discussed this at our May Planning and Zoning Board meeting. We had our city attorney put the language that was reviewed at that meeting into an ordinance, which you see before you tonight. We are taking steps to make sure that this is reviewed very thoroughly because this is a pretty major change to our comprehensive plan. And as such, we just wanted to give the board another chance to ask any questions or provide any comments to the ordinance, now that it's in ordinance form. Much of, it's pretty similar to what we presented in May, but once again, we wanted to give you guys an opportunity to discuss it a little more and see if you have any comments, changes.
You said it was similar, what changed from before?
Honestly, I think it's pretty much word for word what was approved before, just in a more formal...
Did we add a fourth?
No, we didn't. We did not. So that's an element that maybe we want to discuss.
Was that in the previous one or is it not in this one?
It's not in this one, no.
Yeah, one of the things that did not make the final cut that we discussed, at least at a staff level, was if you recall, in the ordinance, there's a number of criteria that the city can look at as we're evaluating what density to award a project. And one of the things that we kicked around, but again, it didn't make it into the final cut, and I'd like to, we can talk about that this evening, is the provision of affordable housing in a project. I mean, if you've been following the news in Brevard County, really nationwide, affordable housing, workforce housing, is becoming a major issue. And this is one of the ways, you know, cities usually really have two tools at their disposal to encourage or discourage things. In this case, encourage. One of them is, you know, a regulatory approach and the other is financial. Well, we're dealing with a regulatory approach now. And if it is of significance, if it is important to the community to add affordable housing into one of the things that we want to encourage and look at in these mixed-use projects, now's the time to discuss that. And if we get some feedback from the board this evening, we can go back and we can add that into that list of criteria that I was mentioning. You know, from anecdotal, or just from a kind of a guy-on-the-street observation, I'll share with you, is that, you know, the city is becoming less and less affordable all the time. That's for a number of reasons. We don't need to get into all of that. But one of the, one of the projects or properties that has provided a lot of affordable housing or a large percentage of the affordable housing is up on Chandler. And that was recently purchased and their pricing structure is changing. And it's becoming less affordable. And so my point is, is that it seems like every day we're losing stock of our affordable housing, either for situations like this or conversion to Airbnbs. You know, a lot of, a lot of owners who are renting, long-term rentals, are getting out of that business and going to Airbnb. I guess the perception is there's more money to be made in that approach. So anyways, that's an item I wanted to bring to the board's attention. If that's something that the board feels is appropriate to include in the ordinance, we can, we can tweak the ordinance before we bring it back, perhaps even as soon as next month.
Can you tell us why that was taken out?
It never made it in. We discussed it. We talked about it. And it was, it's more of a, rather than a technical, specific land use, it's more of a community aspiration kind of thing. And so I think that would, that would best come from the board if, you know, that's, the board is really here to kind of be the voice, the eyes and ears and the voice of the community. And so that's, that's why we at least raise it to the board, so.
How would you do that? Would you say a certain percentage of the residential portion of it?
Yes, that's exactly what we would do. We've kicked around some draft language and yes, we've, I think the, some of the language that I recall, we indicated that the, up to 5% of the units would be affordable. And affordability is something that really is, we don't set that. We don't establish what that means. That's established by Brevard County and the HUD. And affordability really varies by location. What's affordable here in Brevard County is certainly different than what's affordable in Miami or Tallahassee or even Volusia County. So, and that affordability changes over time, too. It's HUD promulgates affordability data, if you will.
Let's check the data here. Do we have, I didn't realize we were going to talk about this subject tonight, or I would have boned up on it. Is it in our land use policies and, you know, the LU, Land Use Policy section in the land use ordinance? Is it in there?
Affordable housing? There's some, there's some general language.
Is it embedded under the housing element?
There is some language, some general language in the, in the housing element of the comprehensive plan, but there's not, nothing specific. That's why we would, that's why we're bringing this to the fore this evening.
Well, I understand that. We're bringing it because we, I guess we have to address it. Who says we have to address it? Under what edict are we operating? Why are we having to address it?
I don't, there's, there's nobody that says you shall do this. I mean, it's, the county several months ago was requested the city provide some feedback to them on how we were going to address affordable housing. But it's not, it's not required. It's not required from the federal or state level or county level. That's something that, as I said earlier, it's an aspirational element of the community. That's something...
Okay, having said that, affordable housing and beach property are pretty hard to relate. Okay? How are we going to do that?
Well, that's, it's going to have to be, it's not going to be a stick. It's going to be a carrot. And that's what we're saying is if you want to do a mixed-use project and if you want to get as much density as you possibly can under our code, as you, as you start to get as proposed, it goes up to 30 units an acre. That's the high-density point. If you want, if you want to get closer to that higher density, you're going to have to start throwing in some of these wishes and desires that as a community we want. And those are listed in that, in the ordinance.
So we've stimulated a question from the, from the audience. Should we wait until after we've concluded our own questioning and include that in? Or how do you want to, how do you like to do that?
Yeah, that's, that's your prerogative, Mr. Chairman. It's if you'd like to hear from the community.
I understand. It's my call in the end, but...
Yeah, it might be good, you might hear something from the community that would spur some...
Well, I'm going to continue some questions and make notes, Kyle. Come forward, be prepared, and when you get forward, I'm going to ask your name and where you live and...
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking time out of your busy lives to work for this great city of ours. My name is Lee Visadominy.
Who?
Lee Visadominy. I live at 421 Lincoln Avenue, Cape Canaveral. I've been in the community for over 30 years. I am a strong proponent of most of the things we do in our city. I was made aware that this was coming to light today. And my, I didn't see it on the agenda either, and so I figured I'd sit and wait. We do have affordable housing. We have numerous mobile home parks in our community that are very affordable. They all are not 55 and over. These people pay well beneath the rental of the rest of a one-bedroom or two-bedroom, which they might have in their mobile home. They pay their own water. I don't know, that'll be my next question, will these affordable houses get less taxes? So people that have rental properties, if they say they're going to rent less, will they reduce their taxes? After all, the taxes are none. If you don't homestead, your taxes go up 10% a year. So part of our affordable housing is, years ago, if we got a hotel or a new community, my taxes went down. I have not seen that in quite some time. Okay? If some of you have been here as long as I, you know that's a true statement. Our taxes went down. New condo went up, our taxes went down. We have not seen our taxes go down. This year, when Commissioner Kellum was trying to keep the budget at a certain point, she was pushed to push it to increase, I think, 2%. There was no reason for it.
Wait a minute. I'm losing the thought here. What are we talking about? 2% of what?
I'm talking about our taxes. Our taxes went up 2% instead of keeping them the same.
And she was...
We have, she, she proposed to keep them the same. I said, no, 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 no. I'm here tonight to say, our affordable housing is our mobile homes. We have over 12,000 renters in the mobile home parks. What is that? We have 12,000 residents? Is that 10%? I think we're well within the 5%. Okay? This was not on the agenda. It was brought to your attention. I don't see it as an issue. We are giving, we are giving affordable housing. As far as I am not, I do have property that I rent. I do not do any Airbnb. I never planned to do Airbnb. I love my community. I love my small town. I love where I live. I don't want to see a change either.
Okay. We've got, we've got a lot to cover tonight. Your three minutes are...
When that building that said that was just purchased, I think it was purchased more than a year ago. And when that property's purchased, their taxes go up.
Your three minutes are...
I'm just saying, let's look at the whole picture. We have affordable housing.
All right. That's a great, that's a great input. Tell me how to spell your last name.
V-I.
You need to fill out that form.
C-I. V as in Victor, I, C-I, D as in David, O, M as in Mary, I.
V-I-V-C-I.
N as in Nancy, I. Vici Domine, means conquer with God.
Okay. Great.
I'll spell it for you.
Okay. I didn't mean to really be rude, but three minutes and we're not going to spend the whole evening on that subject, and we should. You just opened up a whole raft of questions. First question, who, who edicts, how much housing, how much affordable housing? Who decides what's affordable? The people that get affordable, do they get subsidies? Do taxes, blah, blah, blah? It's a whole Pandora's Box. And we're not prepared to, well, hmm. If you want to go back to the beginning, David, should we add a affordable housing element in this criteria? You're the one that brought it up.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're suggesting that it's at least worth a conversation. And that's what we're attempting to have this evening. You know, again, I'm one person, but I talk to a lot of business owners, a lot of property owners, and we get a lot of calls into City Hall about affordable housing.
Who calls? Who's, who's...
Tenants who are getting kicked out of their units.
Okay.
And they can't afford them anymore because the rents are going up.
Reasonable.
The taxes are high.
Well, I'm, Lee, I'm not here to talk about why their rents are going up. I'm just telling you that what, what I, the result of, what I hear.
Would they look into it?
And it's a, it's, it's becoming more and more of an issue, in my view. And if there's something that the city can do about that, certainly lowering taxes is an option. But is there a way that we can incentivize private developers to provide affordable units? This is, this is one way, as a staff, we thought we could, we could include. It's not mandatory, it's saying, hey.
Incentivizing is, said another way, is government a subsidy. Because a builder is going to build to maximize profit. They're not going to lower it to provide affordable housing unless the difference is made between the market value and what they're putting out there as the price of the housing.
Yeah, in this sense, what we're saying is you'll get higher density. I don't want to focus strictly on, wholly on affordable housing. There's a number of things that a developer can do to get higher densities, affordable housing being one of them. But...
You're advocating going from 15 units per acre to higher for affordable housing?
As, that's one of the considerations. I don't, I think there's 10 or 12 of them, but that is, that's, that's, that's one of them that we can...
Well, okay. You just put a marker on the wall that says we have referendum in the city. First, run a referendum to change the density. Okay? Next subject.
That's really, that's the only, that's the only item that we discussed that really, that wasn't in the last draft that the board saw. It's actually not even in this draft, but I wanted to bring it to your attention in case that was something the board felt strongly enough, we would, we would add it to the language. The other thing I want to point out, and we've discussed this in the past, but this is a big change in how we process applications. Right, right now, we have kind of two silos when we're looking at development projects. Let's, for instance, a hotel project. We have our Community Appearance Board, which you're all familiar with, and the Community Appearance Board looks at the aesthetics of a project against standards in the code. And they, they, they look at all new commercial development. Here's an example, a hotel. The Community Appearance Board also approves height increases above the permitted 45 feet up to 65 feet. So if a developer wants to put in something over four stories or 45 feet up to six stories, the Community Appearance Board reviews it and approves it. That's, that's part of the current process. Okay, let's set that aside for a second. The Planning and Zoning Board is involved in the site plan approval process, and you, and this board has its own set of criteria that you look at when you're approving a site plan. Quite a few things that you look at. It's more of a technical review.
We can do that after we establish the criteria. Lee, you've done us a great service by opening the subject up, and we're going to have you...
I always willing to help the city.
We're going to have you back. Don't worry. Just keep notes and save your questions. But, okay...
So one of, one of the things that we're, we've been thinking about for quite a while and it's actually found its way...
Is this the ordinance, the height ordinance?
That's the one, yeah, we discussed it the last meeting.
Is that, what do you have coming to them?
They've already seen it, but it's...
This is a whole new...
Okay.
It's the state bill.
We're allowing, I just got a question from Si. This is a whole new subject. It wasn't even on the agenda. It is wide-ranging. It's a deep subject.
Yep.
It needs a lot of questions and a lot of answers. Rap it out.
Okay, so we're, okay, so let's, so as far as affordable housing goes, is that, would you like to continue this conversation about affordable housing at, at your next meeting?
I think the answer is yes. We need to have a conversation about it.
Okay. We can, we can...
And we'll lay out all the questions we don't know and the answers we need, and we'll invite Lee back to give us benefit of her research. I'm sure she's done some.
Okay.
Or she wouldn't be here.
That'd be great.
All right. Let's agenda this subject for next meeting.
Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll do, we'll do a little bit of research on this and try to, I've heard a couple of questions asked this evening, so we'll attempt to prepare some responses.
Ms. Kellum, would you come forward, please? Got another question. Boy, we really kicked over an anthill tonight, and that's good.
Hi, if you all could be here. Kellum, David, and Sam, for Kene, winning the Harvard vice. I have a question. The mixed-use, as you know, Dave, and we've been discussing it as a council, is really important for new developments that are coming up. Do we have to wait on the mixed-use element with the affordable housing, or can we separate them and move forward with the mixed-use?
Yeah, I mean, the, this board and the council can do whatever you've, whatever you'd like to, essentially. If, if, if the affordable housing issue is going to take on a life of its own, then we can certainly, board's prerogative, we can keep that, set that aside, and we can move forward with the mixed-use ordinance separately. And then at some future point, we can bring the affordable housing issue back to the board and we can have a further, more deep conversation about that. And, yeah, so that's, we can certainly separate them. It's not a problem.
I think we need to just park it over here because it's the first time this has been discussed in depth. But if you're going to have affordable housing and you're going to have mixed use, and it's going to be new development, somebody has to edict what percentage is affordable. And then you have to define who pays the difference, the difference between market value and the affordable rate. That is, don't put your head in the sand. Dead is debt. That's got to be paid. Somebody's got to pay the difference. So if you're going to explore that subject and bring it forward to us, bring some ideas about who's going to pay the difference, okay? You know who it is. It's the government. It's us. Who's going to pay it if the developer says, oh, this is going to be affordable?
Well, what...
Somebody give me some money.
The concept is, if you give, if you give a developer a little bit higher density because they're providing affordable housing, then that additional density generates additional revenue for the developer.
That's a whole different campaign for the city.
Mm-hmm.
People, people like Mickey and all, and Lee and other folks have got to go out and sell that. That's a referendum.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's, it is that, we certainly have never dealt with that before. And so this, this is, this is great. I was hoping we would have a conversation about it. So I guess I need to know, is the board this evening, do we want to just set aside the affordable housing because it's currently not addressed in the draft or mixed-use ordinance that you have in front of you? So nothing has to happen. If the board decides to move forward with mixed use without affordable housing, that ordinance that you have in front of you tonight is all that you need. If you're comfortable with that, we can move forward with that, and we can come back next month and ask for a recommendation from the board on that, on what you have in front of you.
Okay, let me caucus with the board members here. Would you, do you have any more questions you want to ask before we...
You have one question. Is, Dave, is the reason why you brought up the potential of the affordable housing is because we would have to add an element to the comprehensive plan that defines affordable housing like we are doing for mixed use now? And we would just change it once versus twice?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we would have to amend the comprehensive plan for the affordable housing issue. We would, we would more than likely amend the ordinance in our zoning code to, to, to address and to define what all this means. So not need to amend the comp plan, but yes, probably would amend our zoning ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Wow. So we're going to zone for affordable housing? That would be an idea. That's a tough, that's a tough sell.
That is a tough sell. If you start coming, I think what you're saying, Lamar, is we would, I mean, an option would be to...
I'm not saying, I'm not saying we won't try.
Yeah.
That's a tough sell.
I mean, some places actually have created specific affordable housing zoning districts. That's a, that's a whole other conversation. Our, our concept was...
All right, we're, let's just stop. This is a never-ending, we're never going to finish this conversation because it's too important and it's too wide-ranging. One last question, Lee.
I was here also about another meeting, and we think Vicki was here. When we addressed the properties where the old pink elephant was, and we changed the zoning there for a...
Wait a minute. Which pink elephant? There's several.
Oh, there are quite a few in the town.
Several elephants around town.
This was like, this was like the amusement area.
Beachway, the old beach wave site?
No, no, it was a golf place, the golf with the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was on Central and A-1A.
All right, go on.
Central and A-1A.
I've lost control.
And I believe that we changed the zoning there with the premise that we were going to put a senior citizen affordable housing in that area.
When did we make that? When did we make that promise?
And we were given, they were given more use... And we were given, they were giving more use for that property. People here at that meeting wanted to give a deposit so they would have a spot and never have to leave the Cape. They were told, "Oh, it's gonna be way up." I don't see that assisted living project coming forward, I see hotels. So they got more space under the pretense.
Okay, well, I'm listening to a sermon. Stop, please. I'm, I, this sermon can go on and on, it's good.
I've been here thirty years.
What?
I've been here thirty years, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, we appreciate that, but I'm not gonna solve it tonight. There's, it's like the guy that accosted me in front of the church Sunday. He had, he wanted to solve all the world's problems, and he wanted me to do it in twenty minutes, and I couldn't spare him the time because I had to be somewhere else. So he broke into the church and stole the, the cameras for broadcasting sermons and hid them, and the cops caught. I don't have time tonight to solve that problem, it's a big problem. I'm willing to talk about it next meeting. Okay. What I was gonna ask you is, you had this list of criteria, which you started out with affordable housing, and then you came, then you've got seven net developable, developable acres. How did we get seven acres?
Yeah.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, Lamar, I think where the seven acres comes from is, what we did is, we, we undertook an exercise, because the, these mixed use projects typically are larger projects, they're not half acre or one acre projects, they're larger projects to accommodate a mix of uses. And so what we did is, we, and therefore, for a community the size of Cape Canaveral, we didn't wanna see frankly, a proliferation of these mixed use projects all over the city. So what we did is, we said, "Okay, well, what, what's a logical cutoff? What size, what, what's the acreage logically of a, of one of these projects to accommodate the mix of uses, and yet, we don't wanna see a proliferation of them?" So we got a map out, and we identified all of the properties and vacant, developable properties of, of, you know, a certain size. I think there was, I think we started at five acres, then we looked at ten acres, and we kinda went back down to seven acres. And with the seven acre number, there was just, I think there was only four or five pieces throughout the city that met that seven acres, as well as had frontage on their certain road, there's another criteria that has to be met, there's, it has to have frontage on a certain road. So if you took all of those criteria, there was only three or four or five, as I recall, that, that would even be eligible to be processed as a mixed use. So that was really the thinking on the seven acres is, we didn't wanna see too many of them due to the nature of the project, we didn't wanna see them up and down North Atlantic, 'cause you don't want a mixed use project in some of our established residential areas.
Yeah, I'm at C, I'm totally at C. When we had this discussion about the economic overlay, we talked in terms of mixed use businesses, business on the bottom, and people living overhead, they wanted to, and could rent some more units overhead, and this could be every unit along A1A if they chose to develop that way. How? What changed?
Well, but, but, nothing. What we're talking, a mixed use project is proposed under this, this proposed language is more of a large-scale project. What you're describing is, I call it more of a live-work unit. You have a, a smaller piece of property, kind of as an example, the Ellie May's property, are you familiar, are you familiar with that property? You've got a tavern, and above that, you've got a couple of residential units. Right now, that's not allowed in our code. However, there is some language that we're.
Whose property is this?
Um, it's Ellie May's, it's a, it's a restaurant and bar right.
Yeah.
Right up High Cumberland Farms, yeah. There's some language that we're proposing that would allow that type of development in commercial and industrial zoned properties. So the proposed language that you have in front of you is.
Is that's not, it's not in here, is it, that?
The live-work?
Yeah.
It is.
It is. What section of code is it?
It's a separate. So it's LU dash one dash nine, so it's, it's further in.
If you go to page, oh, I'm sorry, it's, yeah, so it's page eight of eleven. Eight of eleven.
Objective LU dash one point eight point B. I think this is probably more what you're, what you're imagining.
Yeah, if you go to that, if you go to that section of the proposed ordinance, page eight of eleven, it's objective LU dash one point eight point B.
Give me a page number, and by the way.
Okay, page eight of eleven.
Number these sheets when you put them out to the public, so we can.
Okay, are your pages not numbered?
Well, not consecutively.
Okay, page eight of eleven.
Lamar, when you get to the ordinance.
I'm in it.
Line item two eighty-six.
I have page eleven in section D.
I'm in the ordinance, give me a.
Okay.
Line item two eighty-six.
Where are you?
I'm on, okay, I'm on page eight of eleven.
Eight of eleven, okay.
And then I'm on objective LU dash one point eight point B, it's lines, it starts at line two eighty-six. If you see that over on your left hand.
I see it.
Okay, and then it goes through two ninety-four. And so I wanna read that real quickly, and I think, Lamar, that's kind of what you're thinking about here. The city council may adopt land development regulations to allow live-work units or live-work space in commercial and industrial zoning districts, so that's a pretty significant part of the city, to be used jointly for commercial and residential purposes where the residence, residential use of the space is secondary or accessory to the primary use of us, as a place of work. Proposed live-work units authorized by the land development regulations in applicable commercial and industrial zoning districts shall not be subject to requirements set forth in the, in the objective, which we've already talked about. And we can go into that if you'd like, but, but that would be like, as an example, that would be the Ellie May's scenario.
So that, that is a mixed use. You, you got live-work units mixed in with commercial, and part of it's residential and part of it's industrial.
Yes.
All in the same building, might be a tall building with a step back like we talked about. So, so what's this seven net developable acres? I mean, why, why, you created a whole new animal here.
Okay, this, you were talking, we're talking about two different things.
Yes.
The, the live.
And why, why are they different?
Because we wanted to allow as much flexibility as we could, because the live, the, a new, a new mixed use project is a, is a larger, significant project. It's going to have residential and commercial and office, and we're not sure what it, what it will include, but it will include a mix of uses. And typically, it's hard to do a project like that on a half acre site, or a twenty-thousand square foot site, or even a, a two acre site. They're usually large, five acres plus. So that's what part of this ordinance is talking about. We did not want to forget the need for our smaller property owners, like Ellie May. We have a lot of situations in this city where I've, I've had to tell people, "No, you can't do that," when they come to me and say, "Hey, I wanna, I wanna run my, I'm an accountant, and I wanna run my accounting business out of my home, and I live upstairs and I have my office here." Our zoning code doesn't allow that. So to allow for that, that's why this section is included, that piece that we just wrote, just read. It's for the smaller property owner who, who right now can't do that. So it's really, they're two different, there's two different animals here that we're talking about.
So which LU is this business about, seven net acres with mixed use?
That is in, that is in.
Which one is that?
That is the larger, the larger new, typically new development. I'm looking for it right now, where it specifically talks about, if any of you.
It's page two of four. Okay, I was also advised four of eleven. I guess, wait, timeout. I think what we need to do is just go down through this ordinance, page by page.
Sure.
And see what got, we're just, we're just skipping all over the place, and I, we're getting lost, and I don't intend for us to be lost.
Sure.
If we're gonna come down here and spend our time, we're gonna know what we're doing, and we're gonna know what decisions we're making, and we're gonna be clear about it. And right now, we're just, we're in the middle of a plowed field, and we don't even know which row we're in.
Okay, I'd be happy to go through the ordinance.
Because I was, I was gonna ask you, after you got down below on page two of four in the agenda item.
Where's two of four? What is two of four?
Before you had all the criteria, minimum, starts out with minimum seven net developable acres?
Yes.
And you got all this criteria down through here.
Yes.
Is that gonna be the first question? Don't answer it, I'm just gonna rattle it off, rattle them off. First question, are we gonna have a checklist that embodies all these criteria against ever development, mixed use? Is there a checklist? And by the way, when I look into each one of these for specificity, sorry, I don't find any specific criteria, most of it's arm-waving. So we got work to do. This, this, this criteria is not really criteria, it's a list of, boy, that'd be nice. So to, to make it happen or enforce it, you've got to have criteria, you've got to have logic and numbers. I don't see any, I just see compatibility and har, just taking one at random, compatibility and harmony with special and distinctive character of the city. What kinda, okay. What, what is, what defines that? How do you enforce that? If you're gonna check it off as a requirement, how you gonna, which requirement is gonna make that happen? Okay, point made. This criteria is awfully, awfully hollow.
Do you want me to respond?
We're not, yeah, I'm waiting.
Okay.
I won't, go ahead, I won't shoot you.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I mean, I, I think there, there, respectfully, I believe there are, there is criteria, hard and fast, black and white criteria, in the proposed language that, that this board and the council can use as far as designating properties that will be eligible for a mixed use development. And they are right here on page two of four, it has to be seven acres, it has to be at least seventy-five percent of, of, one, no more than seventy-five percent of any one land use will dominate the project, it has to be located within the overlay district.
Is this for the seven acre project?
Yes.
Or is it for the ever little small project along the street?
No, it's for seven acre project, the seven, these are all for the seven acre projects. This is all for seven acres.
And how many are in this, in the city, did you say? Six?
We, we, yeah, roughly. They have to be adjacent to either Astronauts, Center Street, or West Central, they can't exceed sixty-five feet. They have, they have a base density of fifteen, and they can go up to thirty, as far, with compliance with A through K. So I think there's a lot of specifics in here. You don't, but, on the other hand, you don't wanna become too specific and too rigid, you wanna leave some flexibility for this board to negotiate with the developer. There, there has to be that flexibility built into it. So if this board has some more specific criteria that we would, that you would like to see put in here, please let us know. We're happy to, to, to include any additional criteria. But, but all of this criteria you see on page two of four are for the larger mixed use projects, seven acres or more. As far as the small, I'll call them mom and pop mixed use proj, pieces, we really don't, there, there really are no criteria. We're going to, we'll develop a whole separate ordinance that will put into our zoning code that will give more of the specifics for the mom and, mom and pop mixed use. That's not here right now. All this is doing is establishing some general policies for the large mixed use and the mom and pop mixed use. We're gonna come back in later on and start.
And when you say mom and pop, that's live-work units?
Yes, I'm sorry, live-work, I'm sorry, yes. We're talking about two different things.
Okay, when I express befuddlement, just understand that I'm getting educated, I understand, we're in the middle of chaos, and good ideas bubble out at the top, and we'll be okay in the end.
Yes, I know it will.
You know me. So I'm just processing. I'm gonna stop and be further educated by my board members here. Do you guys have any other questions you wanna dive in here and swim under? I looked at this criteria, and I said, "Okay, that's great, and my question is, who, which, will project approval include a checklist of all of these criteria?" And if the answer is yes, then my next question is, "All right, if I'm the guy under the gun to make the call," and generally we are, okay, somebody tell me what compatibility is and harmony is. And it's, you know what it is? I know it when I see it.
Exactly, and that, that's why it's hard to define compatibility.
Yeah.
That is just something that is intuitively known, and that's, this board will be responsible for bringing, for voicing those community aspirations and wishes. That's gonna be part of your deliberation on whether a project is compatible or not.
All right, we're in the middle of chaos, and I've been there before. The good ideas will bubble out, we'll, we'll get, we'll get it, bubble down the way, work down the way we want it, we'll get there. But I'm gonna ask right now, have we stimulated any profound wisdom here in the board? Help me out here.
One of the things that comes to mind is, is I don't wanna see something written and enacted that ties the hands of a developer so badly that he ain't gonna put that spoon in his mouth. And the affordability thing is great, but again, you're inviting somebody to the table that this developer may not necessarily want. I think it has merit, and this may not be the time to do it with the mixed use. I know that the desire to have mixed use abilities in this city has been desired by many, and this is something I would love to see go forward. And I kinda like the way this is written, the fact that you've left a door, you've left a door open that gives them the ability to do that smaller deal where you have a live and work type environment. This might be something that the city really needs. I go to other places and see open malls where people have set up pottery or ironwork, where they have the ability to live in this and, and work in this environment. And in a sense, that is affordability in itself, it's the fact that they're able to live and work there in that spot, so my, my two cents, I kinda like the way that was written in here towards the end, but I'm all for what, what I've seen right here, I didn't, don't, I, I did, I did have a concern about the seven acres, I've sat here and did the math on it, man, that's a pretty good chunk of land, but it's, it's like, like you said, there's only a few places in this city that's gonna be capable of that, and I don't wanna see a massive mall-type project come in here. I think, I think this has got some good merit to it, the way it's written.
Very good, thank you. Those are comforting words to me. How about you, Susan, you got any comments?
Well, we went through this last time, right, and I, I agree not to put the affordable housing into it, keep it separate, money, we still need to address it.
Yeah, we'll do it.
I do think we need to have a checklist, some of this stuff is, you know, vague, but as we went through them last time, they seemed pretty relevant and good, and I, I like that you have the live-work thing for those people. There was another establishment that wanted it, that couldn't do it. You know, Ellie May's, it was just inherited, she doesn't even own the property, you know, and it's, you know, I don't know how the guys were living up there, if we, they weren't allowed to for years, so I don't know.
That's a whole other story.
But anyways, it's being addressed now.
Yeah.
So I think it's good.
All right, we're getting there. How about you, Dennis? How about you, Dennis?
Um, I, I'm for it. I mean, I, I think we did a good job last meeting and I think we went through a lot of the stuff. I am in favor of looking at the affordable places. I think, um, if you look at the Florida Today paper, there's been a large place down in Melbourne, The Drift, and then there's another one in Titusville. And I read both of them and none of them have anything that I could see. There were, the one was called High End. And I'd hate to see that here, I think we have enough high-end. I'm not saying that we want to create problems for ourselves, but I'd like to look at that, not necessarily hold this up, but I'd really like to see how much of an impact and what it could do. It might not be good in my mind, but maybe it's something that we should just take a look at now and not hold this up, but maybe you could get back to us about that.
Yeah. Well, we've committed to Lee and Mickey that we're gonna drive this around.
Yeah.
We'll drive it around, see how we, see how it works. Okay, go ahead, Dennis, you have a, uh, anything you wanna add?
Well, I'm definitely, uh, for the mixed-use, you know, we've talked about that. I think we've done a good job of discussing that. I agree with Stephen, I like this, the way this is laid out here. I now have in my mind the difference between the mom and pop type thing and this big development. Uh, and I'm glad that we're looking at both of them. I too think that we need to look at the affordable housing. But I do wanna proceed with this. I, I, we've talked it over enough times to where I think we're all for this. So I don't want the affordable housing to hold this up.
Okay.
Do what, do what?
I don't want the affordable housing concept to hold up this.
I hear you. Okay. David?
I think what I'm hearing is the board, there's consensus at the board that you're comfortable with the ordinance, the proposed, the draft ordinance as it's currently worded. So we'll wrap it up and bring it back to the board next month and we'll ask, be asking the board for a recommendation, um, to, we'll send it to the city council. That's, I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, when I read the ordinance, uh, good work, it, it's well-written and, uh, there's just some questions I wanna ask about down in the ordinance before we leave it.
Sure.
Uh, one of them is the PUD, Plan Unit Development. And, uh, don't go, don't go looking yet, just share the question. Plan unit development. Yeah, I do that too. Uh, you refer to it as a PUD zone, and we don't have a PUD zone. We've got R1, R2, but we don't have a PUD zone, so.
We, we don't have a PUD zone, but we do have a PD zone. And if the board remembers, we only, as I, as far as I know, we only have one piece of property in the city that zoned PD. And that is the property, uh, that Life Storage on A1A is located on. Uh, and the reason that is zoned PD is 'cause it was originally zoned C1 until about, up until about four years ago. And the owner of that came in and they wanted to put that mini warehousing or indoor storage in there. And that was not allowed in C1. So it was not a permitted use in C1, it was in C2. So since that zo- people, piece of property was zoned C1, we had to zone it PD, which is more of a flexible zoning district that allows multiple uses. Um, so, so that's our thinking is, I use the word flexible. And a mixed-use project, we would have to, it would have to be a very flexible zoning district. It can't be a static C1 or R2. It's going to be multiple zoning uses in one property. So we would need a PD or something that would be a little bit more flexible than our current.
Encompass them all, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, I had another question down in here, let me get that answered real quick and we'll, we'll move out of here. Let's see, building height, you handled that real well, um, I thought. Anybody that thinks any different, jump in here and correct me. Let's see. Let's see. Yeah, go to page, uh, four of eleven in the ordinance. Policy LU one eight, A, A, ah, A1, one eight, A1. Okay? And it reads the max, the, the, uh, mixed-use land use category shall be a future land use map designation, which may only be approved by the city council on a project-by-project basis. That confused me a little bit, say some more words about that. I.e., do you, do we have to make a mixed-use map for every project? Or I thought mixed-use encompassed, uh, basically the economic overlay.
Yeah.
But go ahead, say some more words about that.
Yeah, I mean, we kicked around a couple of ideas on how to handle this, but where we landed, our recommendation is, is that because the, each mixed-use project is going, could be so different than another one, um, you could have, in one, you could have commercial and residential. In another one, you could have industrial and residential. In another one, you could have office-
Light and, light and-
Light industrial and residential. So, they really need to be looked at and evaluated, project by project, property by property.
So the council would have to approve one after another, small land use maps?
Yes, we would, we would process what's called a comprehensive plan amendment and we would, we would amend our future land use map. So yes, we would actually change the designation on our future land use map. And remember, there aren't that many pieces of property that are, would be eligible under the current criteria. So there really, there really wouldn't be, it wouldn't be crazy to stay on top of it. I think, you know, if we have two or three, I think we'd be, I think that's may be all we see, but, uh, but yeah, 'cause, just because of the diversity of, of, of the mixed-use projects, we wanted to look at it case by case and approve it through a development agreement or DA, case by case, property by property. Hope that makes sense.
That, that could be not much, or it could be a lot. Depending on, depending on a building boom. Okay, uh, we're gonna bite that off and, and, and work that way, I get it. There's another one here. Yeah. Go to page five eleven, five of eleven, line one seventy-nine in the ordinance. Proven firsthand experience of the developer to successfully finance and complete one or more projects of such physical and visual scales and design as evidenced by a written portfolio. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it's basically a screening tool.
Yeah, we've never done that before. People, you know, if we'd have done that before the, uh, Assisted Living Proposed Project, that would have, that would have been helpful to us. It would have screened out yes or no on that one. But instead, we let it linger and die, agonizing death.
Yeah. And that, honestly, that language was proposed by our city attorney because he's worked in communities where, um, let's just say, a developer has cut his teeth on his first project and it's not, it's ended badly. Not all the time, of course, but it can. So this is just an opportunity for the city to, for the city to evaluate the developer and what his or her background and strengths and weaknesses are.
Okay, so we got, that's a two-step project then, two-step process. Future land use map, that land use map has to be changed.
Yes.
Then we have to come along and have to change the zoning.
Amend the zoning, yeah. The, the, and those two typically would run concurrently with one another. Yeah.
Okay, we've done that before.
Sure.
You have a comment, Susan?
I don't know, as you said, we've done that before, just what you said.
Yeah.
Alright, well, you know how to do that. Oh, a little of a submitting form right here. Yeah, I'm looking through, uh, my notes and underlines here. I think it's a well-written ordinance, you guys did a lot of good work here.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I appreciate it and I'm sure the panel does too.
Well, I, I will say, if, if the board comes up with any questions, we certainly are, will have time at the next meeting before we, the board makes a recommendation to discuss those further, if, if, if there's any additional questions or comments.
So we don't have to make a decision, we'll just say-
Not tonight.
Keep going with it till you come forward with a, uh, ordinance ready to approve.
Correct. And our, we're shooting for the fourth Wednesday in August. That'll be when we'd like to get back together again.
Okay, I'm seeing head nods. Alright, we swam around in that and I'm thankful for your input. It really clarified things for me. What else, before we wrap this up? Yes, we, we owe the, uh, people that we made commitments to tonight, we owe them a conversation, or ourselves a conversation. I'm gonna recognize Mickey again. Go ahead, Mickey, what, what else you got for us?
You know, this mixed-use, uh, part of this ordinance is awesome and, you know, it leads us to the small-town feel and, um, the visions that we have for the, from the people. My question is, what is the land requirement for a hotel?
What is the land requirement for a hotel?
Five, five acres.
It used to be five acres, Lamar. When the, when the, when this, when the city adopted the overlay district, that five-acre minimum went away.
And we, but it didn't disappear entirely, it became up for negotiation.
Yeah.
It, it's not gone, that's the baseline from where you start.
Okay.
The, the standard that's still there is the hundred-and-fifty-room minimum. You have to build a hundred-and-fifty rooms, minimum, but it can be on, I think the smallest site we've done a hundred-and-fifty-room hotel on is approximately three acres.
Okay, and so the seven acres that we need for this, you say there's how many parcels and where are they?
Um, if you think about it, I mean, there, the IAP, if, if, if the Mr. Chairman would like me to try to go off the top of my head, the IAP piece, uh, there's a couple of pieces up at the intersection of North Atlantic and West Central. Um, the old ALF site right behind Beach Wave is over seven acres.
Right, and do you think that, um, you know, contractors, it would be more? I mean, we need the mixed-use in our city. And, and, you know, the places I'm thinking of are the ones on Center Street?
Yes.
Like, that we've been looking at for thirty years?
That would be eligible as well.
Okay.
That's one of the, that's one of the big mixed-use projects, right?
Yes.
That you're thinking about?
They've, they've, they've assembled four pieces and they're, they're over seven acres.
And they're, and they're, those contractors are waiting for this mixed-use to pass?
Yes.
That's why it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
And they've been very patient.
Well, as long as they can see evidence that we're getting there, they'll, they'll work with us. Uh, let's see. So we made a commitment that, uh, before I wrap this up, we, we're gonna, uh, wait for you to finish this up and finish the editing and bring it forward for, uh, final approval. And then we're going to, uh, fulfill a commitment we've made to these people to have that conversation about subsidized affordable housing. I call it subsidized, it's, it's just, it's just in my head, it's gonna have to be subsidized some way or another.
Well-
Either increased density, which is a debt we've, that, that's a big debt we'd have to pay. We have to go have a campaign through the city to increase the density. And, okay, that would be there to do. It's, it's called thinking really big.
We, you will, we'll talk, we'll, we'll have a good conversation about that.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll have that conversation on our next agenda. I don't know how to, how to tell you how to do this, but I'd rather not get thrown into a, boy, I didn't see that coming when we get there for that conversation. Try to organize it a little bit into some topics that we need to-
Sure.
Weed through.
Sure, we'll do that.
Uh, okay. Anything else, panel, before we leave the subject? They're gonna edit it, bring it forward. We will recommend approval in that form and we'll keep working with the, uh, affordable housing.
Good, thank you.
Alright. Then, uh, the next item on the agenda is... This is gonna be a- This is gonna be a fun one. Parking.
Uh, they're all fun, Lamar.
Yes. We're gonna talk about parking. Now, we started out, we were gonna investigate this animal and we were hoping to get a consultant to go and do the homework for us.
Yeah.
I'm fetish, I know where you're going. You, 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 you got ambushed. But, uh, we, we wanted a consultant to go do the homework and look all over the state and bring forward all the different ideas. And that got, uh, changed into, no, you don't need a consultant, do it yourself, you're capable. And we are, it just takes longer. And now we got somebody to help, that, that consultant is gonna help and I don't know how they're gonna get into that, you'll, you will referee that, David. But, uh, okay. You know, I'm going into this with the mindset that there ain't enough parking anywhere in the United States. Okay? Now, having said that, how are we gonna solve that conundrum? Where do we find that extra parking to fix this problem? The only way I see it, well, I'll hold that thought.
Well, I'll let Kyle, I'll let Kyle introduce his, his research, but-
Take, take us through it, Kyle.
Yeah, it's, it's, parking is a, it's a difficult situation.
Yes.
Kind of, it's, it's right up there with signage.
It's what I call a thorny issue.
Yeah, and, and when you're, when you're two square miles and you're feeling all of this growth pressure, it, it just, it's, it's, uh, it's gonna have to be tough decisions.
Just so I don't ambush you with it, when, when we get through talking, I want you to take us through the, uh, the parking graphic. Just take us down through that so we, we get it. Uh, Susan's already done the analysis on it, she could probably tell us. But, uh, I'd like to have you go through that with us so that we just get everybody else's, how they did it.
Okay.
And then you got this map of, uh, where things can happen.
Locational standards.
And you'll take us through that in more detail. Alright, go ahead, Kyle.
Sure, so, it is, it is a complicated, um, problem, uh, where there's no real good one solution, so I'd like to put my research out there to you guys and maybe we can discuss where we'd like to go moving forward. So I did the, uh, analysis where I looked at a lot of different municipalities across the state to see how they handle it, so it's, as you know, guided specifically toward bars and restaurants. So I, I went, uh, both local, Cocoa Beach, Satellite Beach, to see how they did it, um, as well as Kelly Klepper from, from Kimley Horn brought up a couple places that, that he said would be kind of similar, Sebastian and Venice. So I, I looked at those, um, and really my, except short of, short of building a parking garage, or, you know, it, it's hard to get more parking rather than, you know, look at our existing parking requirements and see, are we doing this right? Are we, is there some other way we could be approaching this? So that's kind of the mindset I took was looking at the way other municipalities calculate their parking requirements, seeing if it's, makes sense in the context of Cape Canaveral, because we are a very unique place, as we all know, we don't have that dense core, you know, we don't really have a central business district where it would make sense to eliminate parking requirements some places. And so, you know, we, we, we have to figure out a unique situat- a unique solution, so. Yeah, so, basically, we, we currently require one space per three seats. This has caused some, some issues, uh, with, with a couple places just because, you know, somewhere with a hundred-and-fifty seats is gonna need, you know, fifty parking spaces, but we just don't have that much space in, in the city. And, um, you know, there's a couple other, and actually, do you, is this working? Is it showing, it's not showing up on mine? Oh, yes, can you go to the parking? I just wanna kind of go through the, um... Yeah, keep going, it's... Alright, yeah, so, challenges, like I said, limited space, the cost of providing parking where other infrastructure could potentially go. And then a big one for us, the environmental impacts of, of- then a big one for us, the environmental impacts of requiring a lot of parking with, you know, a high level of impervious surface, when we are already burdening our stormwater system quite a bit. So the alternatives would be to look at a different standard of parking requirements, and maybe requiring a little bit less, so that could either be, so currently we do seats, we could look at number of employees, the square footage, either the total square footage or the square footage of the service area, or, you know, the outdoors area, so minus the kitchen. Total occupancy was brought up by the council as this possible solution, using the occupancy determined by the fire department. And then there are some, some of the more creative ones, parking plans or studies, or parking reductions for low-impact development, or, you know, putting more bike racks, and, you know, you get a 10% decrease for every 10 bike racks, things like that. So I took, I did the spreadsheet, it's on the next slide. It's not the most elegant spreadsheet, but, so I took a couple of these jurisdictions, and I looked at a lot more than this, but it really boiled down to the ones I mentioned, seats, employees, floor area, or occupancy, so I just picked some of these municipalities that are, you know, pretty standard, and I took two different restaurants within the city limits, just to kind of see how they would stack up with those parking requirements, and unfortunately, there really wasn't a silver bullet, there wasn't one that stuck out and, and, you know, made me say, oh, that would make a lot of sense for Cape Canaveral. We got closest, I think, using floor area of service areas, but still, there would be some deficiencies there, but, so Restaurant A is more, it's a small, small parcel, it's got a lot of seats and not very much parking, versus a nearby restaurant that has a similar number of seats, but it's got, it's got the required parking, but that parking does take up the entire parcel, and, you know, can, leads to all this impervious surface, which isn't ideal. So, you know, looking at, finding some way to potentially decrease the number of spaces required, how we want to do that, I think it's especially applicable to decreasing the number of parking spaces in areas that are more neighborhood-oriented development, so on the map that I included, which is on the next slide, just proposed some potential locational criteria, so access off of a two-lane public road, I didn't say local road, because we wanted to include North Atlantic, which is not a local road, but, you know, kind of a local road feeling, not, no frontage on, or access to A1A, and then commercial zoning that would permit a bar or restaurant, even if the current use is not as a bar or restaurant, unless the existing use is a non-conforming residential use, because of that area on North Atlantic that has a lot of homes that are still zoned C1.
Let me, I'm just unclear on something, so the parcels that are shown in purple are, are what?
So this is, this is kind of where I would like to talk it out a little bit, the ones that are purple, to me, they meet all these locational criteria, and they also meet the intent of, of what I think we were trying to do, which is promote local, you know, more neighborhood-oriented bars and restaurants, whereas the red technically do meet these locational criterias, but I don't know if they really meet the intent of what we're trying to do, but I couldn't figure a way to...
So are you saying that those areas in purple, we'd have like a two-tiered parking requirement, if you are along A1A, you'd have to meet our typical one-for-three? If you are in the purple areas, there may be some opportunity to...
Right.
Reduce parking requirements because of the residential neighborhood character of that area?
Right, you'd be much easier to bike or walk there.
Okay, I got you.
But of course, the parking requirement that we land on is still not...
Right.
Determined, so that's kind of what, I didn't, I didn't make a recommendation, because I kind of wanted to talk about it, and to get your guys' thoughts, so, yeah, that's the gist of it, if you guys have any questions, feel free.
Okay, first question, Mickey, Lee, are you guys seeing that in the overhead?
No, but I looked at the map that was in this.
Our monitors aren't working for some reason.
Okay, here, would one of you come forward, you can have, you got it? Mickey, you can have mine if you need it. Okay, go ahead.
And I'd just like to make a few comments, and that's what's really driving this whole discussion, is Cape Canaveral is so unique, we're a linear city, and most of the properties, the commercial properties are accessed on A1A, and they're auto-centric, they're auto-oriented properties, but on the other hand, we have parts of the city that are walkable, bikable, and it's, you know, one size does not fit all in Cape Canaveral, so I think what we're suggesting is, with these, based on these criteria that are shown on this map, if we can distinguish between the auto-centric parcels and the bikeable, walkable pieces, that may make sense on coming up with a tiered parking approach to address, to address the city's needs, the business owner's needs. That's one, that's one concept that we're kicking around.
Any concepts you guys have, we'd be happy to brainstorm.
I need further guidance on tiered parking approach, what is that?
So, just basically, it would almost be like an overlay, but it's not quite an overlay, because it wouldn't cover, you know, a whole geographical area, it would be, if you meet these locational standards, you could have a reduced required number of parking spaces.
If, if your property is accessed by a two-lane road, if you're, if you don't have direct frontage on A1A, then you can, we can consider a reduced parking standard for those businesses that meet those criteria, because they're more bikable, walkable, and that's...
But if you reduce parking standards, you keep, you know, everybody's got a deficit in parking. Everybody on this chart has a deficit.
Oh, yes.
In parking.
If we apply...
So if you reduce parking requirements...
Yes.
You're not gonna reduce the number of cars.
That is a, that is a, I agree with everything you just said, and that is something the community is gonna have to wrestle with and decide, and the decision is, helping our businesses stay healthy, and attracting customers, and whatever else we want, versus parking cars. Are there situations where we as a community say, you don't have to meet the one, one space per, one car space per three seats? As an example, I'm using Ellie Mays tonight.
But those people are gonna arrive, but how they get there? They gotta walk?
They can either walk, they can bike.
But they gotta put the car somewhere.
Transportation?
Yeah, well, some of them may not drive a car, and, but, but, and what we're trying to do here is, we're trying to say, these areas of the city lend themselves towards walking and biking. We don't expect a restaurant on A1A up near the hotels for people to walk and bike there.
And you don't expect that to say Southern Charm?
Correct, exactly, so, and so they would not be eligible for these reduced parking standards. The only people that would be eligible for those reduced parking standards would meet these criteria, that theoretically are more walkable, bikable locations.
I'm gonna open this discussion up a little bit. Lee, come forward, you seem to have a lot of comments. Come, come sit next to David or somebody, find a chair.
I just want, I just, I just heard something, and really, I was coming for something else, but I'm glad I'm here. I just heard something, that if you have two-lane road, you would be exempt. They're planning on making our roads one-way, so that would eliminate the two-lane traffic, number one. Number two, we are a bikable, all I've heard since Bennett, we're working on a bikable, walkable, safe community. Well, we walk and we bike, and you know, there's this thing known as Uber? You get dropped off, okay? You could get dropped off at these places, and you could get picked up. If there's no parking, we're resilient. We know how to get around it, you Uber there, if it's a restaurant or bar, you're not gonna drive anyway, you're gonna Uber home. And now, on A1A, we have, we have bus. I don't go to Southern Charm, my son has a bagel store, I eat breakfast at home. This city needs to be more, what do I say Dave? Equitable. It can't be okay, and I love Peg, I go there, I want Peg not to have, be forced to close down. She took a place that was not someplace I would've gone in, and made it a community happening.
She did good.
It's a safe, safe haven for every single person in our community. No one feels like they need a date, no one feels like they're going, they're being infringed upon, it's a safe place. That being said, she promotes, just with her signage, it's a bicycle, we're going to bike to Ellie Mays, okay? The fire, and I'm only using this because I have the information, I wasn't here for this, the fire department says she meets the standards of safety. Let's take that off the thing, she's safe. You want us to walk and bike, we're gonna walk and bike. I heard two-way traffic, excuse me, we're gonna be one-way streets soon, up to Richwood.
Well, not every one, not every street.
Every other street's gonna be one-way or the other way, is from what I've been told.
Well...
Okay?
Uh, I haven't heard that.
So if they're going east, then somebody's going west, this is what I've been told, okay?
Okay, that's...
That's how they're gonna change our water problems, instead of making the rain stay on their own property. I think, I hear, this is not, this is a problem that was brought from the people before us. Well, we're not, we're these people, these businesses are there. We should not be here to cripple people that are making their livelihood in our community. And you want some, instead of maybe some of the other things we've done, maybe we should have taken and put parking, instead of taking away a basketball court for the whole community. I'm not on city planning, I don't want to be on city planning. I like my community, and I don't like that they come and ask you to make changes, you know you have this business, you bought this business, you know there's this many spots, if people want to come to your business, they're going to come, they're going to come. And we do have that big bus riding along A1A, you can stop it. The city wants to do something, start a bus service that goes up and down the streets and takes us to these wonderful places that we can't park in. I haven't seen anything productive to make it better for the people that are making their businesses, paying their taxes in our community.
Question.
Be equitable, equitable.
I saw that exactly what you're talking about in Fort Lauderdale, had to go there for a wedding a couple months ago, and we're staying in this hotel, and they've got this gaggle gathering of big, long golf carts, and all they do is just drive around town, taking people to hotels, bars, restaurants, and just hop on, hop off, so, okay, that's an idea, we could...
We had discussed with Freebie.
We're throwing mud against the wall.
I'm just saying that it does, it seems like they keep taking away, we have thriving businesses.
Yeah, we want to help the business, that's...
Yeah, I want to help business in our community. I don't want to go downtown Cocoa Beach, I want to stay right here in our 1.9 square miles. I don't know what to cross 520, I kind of like it on this side of town.
But in a big city like Fort Lauderdale, you have constant walking traffic. Here in this town, you got, do we have drinking every night? Or is it every Friday night, or Saturday night, or Friday and Saturday only? We gotta identify the days where assisted pick-up, drop-off is needed, that's just something to do, something to go do. We just need more information to work through. We need to find out, I guess we already know the eating and drinking habits of the city, we know where the parking sore spots are, how can we help those people? I don't know yet.
How about helping the people that live here? We like going there, we use an Uber.
Sure.
You can't, you can't count out how people get there anymore. The business is there, we've given them the business license, Moon Hut was there, many years before it was closed, whatever's there now is there again, okay? People, all those restaurants, they walk, they walk to that place to eat breakfast. They walk to Zachary's, you think Zachary's has all this parking? They don't. We, they're servicing the tourists that maybe will spend some money in Cape Canaveral and not just get on the boat.
Take, take an example of where, it's a heavy water hole, I'll call it, down, what's the wine place down there, where you have lots of people that love to go there, and have a big crowd of cars and motorcycles, it's at the crossroads of...
It's Center and...
Center and A1A.
Center and A1A?
Grams.
Now, yeah, Grams, how would you, how would you fix that parking? Tell them to advertise Uber, here's, here's the phone number for Uber, use it, here's a list of numbers.
Grams is in Cocoa Beach though.
Thank goodness Grams is in the city.
It's in county, it's a name, Grams is a name, doesn't count.
I'm sorry?
Grams is not in our city, and it's not in Cocoa Beach, that's a county problem.
We put the wrong name onto the place we're talking about, it's down there at the corner...
I think you're talking about just slide-in.
Slide-in.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so yes, so they do not have enough parking, according to the three-to-one, so I did a little field trip, it was very hot, I like cold beer, right? I saw your purple things, and I'm like going, well, you know, what about, and I've brought this up before, you know, tip a few to, and slide in, and then even, I even did the Moon Hut research as well, right? Because, you know, before I'm going, we need to come, get this resolved, because Moon Hut's coming, you know, what's going on? So, slide-in does not have enough, I have it all in a spreadsheet, I can give you all the numbers, but the basic is, you know, they have, their entrance is from Buchanan, right? It's not from A1A, so technically, it has an entrance from a two-lane road, but it still has a frontage, you know, it's very, the parking is very weird with slide-in, because you also have the Cafe Monte Carlo, and you have the dog grooming, but there's a poster that says that parking is for all three establishments, but if I go and I count the chairs inside and outside of Monte Carlo, and there's only 30 parking spaces, you're in negative 19, based on all the chairs that are there. So are we going to close those businesses down? That, we don't, I don't want to do, let me, let me finish Dave, right? So get through, so I think we need to be fair with everybody, you know, Moon Hut came in, they actually added new spaces, they added 12 spaces, over the dirt and the gravel and the grass, there's still three to four spaces short, okay, based on their seating. So, I get, I... So I get, I, I was reading up on other things. So I guess my whole point is I'm not a big favor of having different restrictions on the, the side streets in the A1A. I think we need to accommodate everybody, right? There are public transportation bus stops along the way. I know that there was this Homes for People Not Cars Act of 2023 that was just introduced, um, in May of 20, this year. And you know, they, the federal, I don't like the federal government getting involved. But what this proposes is that the property owners would have sole discretion to determine how many parking spaces to include in new and substantially renovated buildings that are within a half a mile of a major transit stop.
Say that thought again. You got something there.
This is not in law yet, right? You know, but it was
The idea, what's the idea?
So for property owners to determine how many parking spaces to include in new and substantially renovated buildings that are within .5 miles of a major transit stop. Okay?
I'm, I'm lost there. I lost the connection. Say it again.
Property owners will have sole discretion to determine how many parking spaces to include in new and substantially renovated buildings that are within a half a mile of a major transit stop. Public transportation, the bus stops.
Any, any property does not make a, make a recommendation about some other properties parking.
Correct.
They don't do that, right?
So, yes.
They do?
No, 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 no. It, other property owners do not make recommendations for other properties.
Okay.
Okay?
It sounded like that.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm, I actually have the source of this information and I wrote it word for word. I didn't wanna, I'm saving my printer print, you know? So in the same article that was about it says cities will eliminate parking minimums while maintain, okay, this was another thing that some cities are doing. They'll eliminate parking minimums, which our consultant is not in favor of public, of the minimums. He said that in December. Cities will eliminate parking minimums while maintaining parking maximum laws, which limit how many spaces developers can build. In Tennessee, Nashville's parking reformers left the old parking standards in place, but say from now on, they'll be interpreted as parking maximums instead of minimums. Right? So to me, that, that's another alternative. If you stick with the three to one and do a maximum versus minimums. And then, you know, the other thing that Wes brought up, you know, back in August, you know, let the, which you guys said, uh, let the businesses adhere to the, uh, fire codes. And then for the occupancy limit. And that, uh, the local businesses already are required to have a license with the Department of Business and Professional Regulations to meet requirements for the different liquor licenses and all of that stuff that we're here. So I have, so to me, that's two options other than doing a tiered thing. Either go to maximums, make your minimums your maximums. So you know, people aren't gonna build too much. Or, you know, go with the fire code and, uh, the Department of Business and Professional Regulations and let them monitor that stuff. So that's just my two cents.
So
Thank you.
That's, that's good thinking, good, good research. Thank you for doing that. So take slide in, for instance. Uh, they can accommodate many people? Hundred people? Fifty people?
I think they've got like 12 or 13 parking spaces, maybe a little bit more than that allocated to them. So that's
But how many people can get in the, get in there?
It depends. I mean, if you look at the, as, as Susan's talking about, the fire department establishes an occupancy load. And that's based on square footage of the, of the building. So that
Well, okay, so I'm trying to work through this. So the owner is supposed to regulate that or the manager, whoever, regulates the number of people that can come in the building according to the fire code. Too many people, he gotta, she's gotta tell so many to get out, right?
Theoretically.
And then you gotta go out there and tell you people driving these cars, get them off the property. You got too many cars. You don't match the people that are here. How's that work?
Well, how it works is when the, when the parking, parking lot gets full, the people who drive there and wanna park, park on adjacent properties. And so that becomes, that's, that's a whole other, that's a private property issue.
Becomes a sore point, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, I, we have a, the city of Cape Canaveral has a code that says you cannot park in, on a city street currently. So theoretically, the police, the Proust County Sheriff's Department can be ticketing people who park in the street if there's, if, if, if they're overflow parking on the street. I don't think that happens a great deal, but, but that's, that's kind of the reality of what happens is they're, they're parking on adjacent pieces or, um, you know, cause a lot of the places and a lot of the bar and restaurant parking is high demand after five o'clock. And some of these other businesses are closed at five. And so they just go find a place to park or they park on a vacant piece of property. Now, that happens on a regular basis.
Ergo, we have not solved the parking problem.
No, it solves itself.
Mickey?
Just a couple of things, excuse me. As a council, we've discussed a few times, um, making incentives for businesses to share parking. Like Sassy Spoon is closed at two o'clock. Uh, Moon Hut does breakfast and lunch. They're closed. Is there a way as a city we can incentivize businesses to share parking without problems? You know, there's, uh, right there on that corner, there's Ellie May's, there's Lampost, there's Moon Hut, there's Sassy Spoon. And there's just not enough parking. But like I said, some businesses close. So if we could figure out a way to, to ask these businesses to share, um, I don't know what the answer would be for that. And then also, um, slide in, uh, the, you know, the owner there, Peter, um, talked to me about if we changed the, um, parking requirements, he would be able to turn, have a restaurant there, um, if we lowered it. So I think the parking requirements stifle business growth in our city. And we want businesses, we want amenities for our people here. You know, little boutique shops or whatever. So I think that the parking is, um, a major problem. And a lot of cities around the country are just doing away with parking minimums altogether, which helps business. And then also
Mickey, just, just help me out here. So we've got these wonderful businesses that have, uh, lots and lots of trade, lots and lots of cars coming in, trying to get on the property, trying to find a place to get the car so they can get in. How does reducing the parking requirement? It doesn't reduce the number of people coming on Saturday night. Uh, help me get there.
Well, I mean, like if we, like, let's take Ellie May's for example. Saturday night, people are coming. Moon Hut is closed, but a lot of people that, you know, between the owners, they can't seem to get a happy medium where they can share the parking. If as a city, we could give them some kind of incentive that, you know, we're not taking up your, during your lunchtime, we're not gonna park there. But at night, you know, why can't we? And you know, we, we, uh, also promote biking, walking neighborhood. There is a lot
Well, that's not reducing the parking requirement. That's just giving permission to overflow.
Right.
To, to another problem. So when you talk about reducing the parking requirement, I get lost. It, it's meaningless, isn't it? If you reduce the parking requirement, it doesn't reduce the number of cars.
You know, as, as, as I said earlier, it's really gonna have to be a community, what your aspiration is. Yeah, I mean, you're not going to stop cars from going somewhere.
You gotta change the parking requirement, but you know, if you reduce it, well, follow me here. You got slide in, they got a parking lot. It fills up. More people come. They gotta find somewhere else to go. So they park nearby. Now let's reduce the parking requirement and help them out. It didn't do anything. The cars are there, other extra cars are coming. What did reducing the parking requirement do? See, I, I, I'm getting lost in this reduce the parking requirement phrase.
Because Ellie May's, for example, has a, um, I can't even think of the word. There, we put a, um, help me, Dave.
What do we do?
Um, we, code enforcement violation.
Yes, because of the, there's a number of issues there, but one of them is lack of parking.
Right.
Doesn't meet our current standard.
So that's where we need to park and reduce them to help the businesses.
Right, because Ellie May's requires, that's how they can have their people who's the firemen and this is the management and they need the fire code.
Right.
Cause we're a walkable, bikeable
It's two different issues.
Two, there's two, two different codes, two different issues.
Right, we just put a stay on the, on the code enforcement thing. But you know, I, I just, we promote being a business friendly city. We need to do what we can to help with, and we only have so much land. And my favorite subject with Dave is CRA money can always help us buy a piece of land or buy a little parcel and make it a city parking lot that would help this business, this business, this business. Put parking meters in there. Bring some revenue to the city. You know, I, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't have the answers, but this is the things that the council is, um, throwing around. And we, we really depend on you guys and your opinions too. So thank you.
Well, we appreciate that. The, I think we need new phraseology. We talk about, well, okay, that place is overflowed. We've gotta reduce their parking requirement. And that didn't help me see through where, where'd all those cars go? If you reduce the parking requirement, what, what does that mean to reduce the parking requirement for Ellie May?
You know, the law acts like it. They have a good reform with the real estate next door.
Yeah.
So they have a nice report, report. They'll be some wonderful people. The people that own that real estate are very courteous. They know that the people that go with sliding might buy apps. Yeah, you could park in my parking lot. It's known as in the old days, one hand helping the other. If you're a good neighbor, you gotta be kind to each other. I live on Lincoln Avenue. I know the traffic sometimes is crazy. Do I go and pull city every day? Oh, no, you just want to talk to the people, please talk to this and that.
Yeah, I
You know, there are, we have lots of, we have plenty of land that they have been dead. They can put parking lots in if they choose. And when I say they, whatever the powers that be, they run the city. And every couple of years, those powers change. It's like it's all numerous. That was before me, that was after me, that was before me. So these are thriving businesses. I don't understand the logic. We have very few things going for us that help us enjoy our quality life here. Why would the city want us to spend money in the port, in Cocoa Beach, in Cocoa Village? We live here. We don't have to go over the bridge.
The point being
We have plenty of places. We have all those hotels. These people wanna go someplace. They get in an Uber and they go. All right? They want live music. They get in Uber, they go down to 142 and they do whatever they do down there. They wanna go to a good restaurant, they get in an Uber, they go down to Cocoa Beach and go to Flavors. They wanna go, they Uber. The world's changing. We have to change with it. Everybody doesn't drive a car.
So what I'm hearing is, is hey, we can just sit back and do nothing and everybody will figure out how to do an Uber.
Yeah. Yeah, I have learned, I have learned an Uber.
That's what my kids do. Whenever they come visit me, they wanna go places, they use the Uber.
But you know what, they, you know, my kids say, Mom, they're gonna turn that away. Let us move for a moment.
Okay, so why do we still have the parking problem?
So let me, let me try to, I, I understand your confusion. I understand your confusion, right? So every, this, the parking quote problem came out when Ellie May's had a whole bunch of people here. And yes, she does not have enough parking for this three to one.
Business is good.
So, so the, the, uh, whatever, the council or the city manager said, okay, we're gonna put a stay on any of this code violations if you don't meet the three to one parking for all the existing businesses. And you planning and zoning board and the staff, figure out what's the best, uh, zoning requirements for parking for the city of Cape Canaveral, right? So as you go back and you look, there are more businesses that don't meet this code enforcement policy. So if we go back to getting rid of the stay, then we have viable businesses that are gonna have violations put against them and they'll probably go out of business. So, so now we're trying to figure out what's the best requirements to establish for the city of Cape Canaveral.
So we, we reduced the stay, took it away, but put a stay in place. And that's working okay. We're not issuing violations. Why not just extend it forever and say, let's don't have any parking requirement? Just park where you can. And if you can't find a parking place, take an Uber. How's that sound?
That's, that's part of this whole discussion. Yep. That was, that was what even Wes had said, why do we even have a parking requirement? Can we just get rid of it? I think Dave had said, shared some information that that could cause some problems.
I've, I've worked in communities, uh, where we've, we eliminated parking requirements at all, completely. No parking. However, there has to be an alternate. We just can't stick our head in the sand and say, no parking's required. I mean, there has to be alternates or you're gonna have, you're gonna create a whole different set of issues. And, um, the, the communities that I'm familiar with that have done away completely with parking requirements are, are of, of a nature where they can build this elevated parking structure, where they can build these pocket parking facilities that Mickey's talking about, um, that have a much more robust, um, public transit system. Yes, we're a very, as I said earlier, we're a very linear city and it makes it diff, I mean, we cannot build a parking garage on one end of the city if we can even find the room to do it and expect people to walk three blocks there. It's just, it's just, it's, 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 so our, our options are limited, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, that, that ties in with if you had this, uh, pick-up, drop-off, uh, golf cart
Sure.
available all over town.
That
And you had places to stash the car. You'd need about four parking garages up and down the city, spaced evenly up and down the city. You can find a place to put them. Uh, maybe we should look for, uh, places, we should look for, uh, available funding to build parking garages, to condemn the land, uh, build parking garages and then put in the pickup. I'm throwing mud against the wall here for our friends. We're just seeing what sticks.
You know, there's, there's really not that many places that we have a burning parking issue. Ellie May's is one. That little area of, that little area of retail right in there with the, the restaurants and the park, and the bars.
Question, if, if we took away the parking requirement, would Ellie May have a parking issue?
Not with the city, she wouldn't.
Yeah? What would be the issue?
With her neighbors, because the people would be parking all over.
The property across the street is condemned, Dave. Okay? It's condemned. There are no neighbors. The fire department is on one side and Vincent Keenan is on the other.
Right, well, we, we can't, we can't say Ellie May, you can park across the street, because
No one's asking you to say what they can do.
Okay.
We're just asking you not to say what they can't do.
Okay.
Well, let's
Nobody can walk in the streets of Cape Canaveral.
How do you, how do, question, how do you incentivize, uh, the next door business with an empty parking lot to share their parking?
You're nice to know. You close at six.
Well, I'm nice.
My, my experience with especially bar and restaurant owners is they're generally not nice to each other. My experience, I could be wrong. My experience, I could be wrong. I think it would be difficult to get, because you've got liability issues, that's, that's, I've talked to people about doing exactly that. And they're concerned about liability. I don't want those bar people on my property and tripping and falling over a curb, and they're gonna sue me, because I let them park here. That's the reality, that's, those are the issues that these guys and ladies are thinking about.
You know what, you know what they would tell you again, in Lincoln Avenue, if somebody was parking on property that wasn't city property? What do you think they would tell you, Dave? It's not a city problem, that's a civilian problem. Call it a term.
Mickey, agreed.
Um, I just, you know, in most places, and this is just a question, like Ellie Mays, for instance, we do away with the parking requirement. People come there in their car, they can't find a place to park, they park on the street, they get a ticket. Won't the market fix the problem itself?
But go park in city property.
To a degree, yes, I agree with that.
The community centers break party, they can park down there.
Yeah, they can park down...
And walk up the street, which I think they do. It's closed on Sunday anyway, so they can park there all day Sunday, because it's not open.
What are you talking about?
Our city community center is closed on Sunday.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But I think the market will take care of the parking issues in a lot of places.
Yeah, and if people get tired of having to walk three blocks, they'll just stop going there.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna argue with you.
I walk three miles.
Yeah, well, Susan, you're in good shape and...
No, but, and I, I just want, you know, we keep saying Ellie Mays, it's not an Ellie Mays problem, there's other things, right?
It's the whole city.
Mickey and Lee, it would really help us out if you'd come to the podium so we can get your comments on the, on the record. We, we really need them. We need your thinking and your input, so, but we need to get it recorded. So, would you do that for us? Just come up and sit nearby, Mickey, and both of you, just...
All right, this is how, this is how I see it. We have very viable nightlife places that are nice, you know? They're not smoky, you don't come in...
Okay, we don't need the commercial, what's the point?
So, I think that we do, the city, if they really want to help out those restaurants in that quadrant, you condemn that property. Throw a parking lot in there, that would like be doing something useful, okay? They're condemned, they're condemned anyway, you're not collecting taxes on them. My taxes aren't gonna go down because we didn't sell them. And I think Slade Inn the same thing. Slade Inn has a unique customer that utilizes this place. Many of them work at the Space Center, Pete works there, Elise runs a great business. When Monte Carlo was closed and the dog groomer, Pete is thriving. And people, whether, you people that sit on this board use public transportation or Ubers, many, many people do. Maybe somebody should go and click how many Ubers drop people off, to, to just identify yourselves, how many people are using this. We, people in Cape Canaveral, and you redid great zoning, you're doing great rezoning, you know, you have houses that have four cars, and there's not enough parking for them. They can't park on the street, we've taken that off the table when we built the city. And some of our streets are like the narrowest streets in the city, I'm not even gonna tell you who's Black Bat is. And then, you know, we still have to abide by these archaic rules. You are a walkable, bikeable city.
So we take those rules away, so we take those rules away.
Take the rules away.
Where do those cars go?
And people want to get a ticket, let them get the ticket. They either get a ticket, or they take an Uber. And we have, oh, I can't tell you...
You lost me.
I, I can't tell you how many times I am in, I know you want to go home, but I can't tell you how many times I am in Ellie Mays, and people are in there from the hotels. Closing down our local businesses like this, you're cutting the lifeline off. People go there from all of these hotels that put four thousand, five thousand, six thousand people on boats every day. They come in the day before, they have, need someplace to go. They can't all leave at the Radisson.
What's that got to do with the parking?
They don't take a car, they take an Uber.
Oh, okay, that's...
They Uber.
Yeah, Lee, you actually gave me a good idea.
Can I say anything the same?
Yes.
Good idea, okay.
Well, I mean, what, what I was thinking when Lee was talking is, and I agree with her, I think there's different peak demands for parking depending on the type of business. That's, 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 I agree with, I agree with that. I was kicking around the idea, well, what happens if we just said, "Okay, until five o'clock, you have these standards. After five, we have a different set of standards," because that's ti, tip...
They don't take Uber in the morning.
They're not gonna Uber to a bar in the morning?
They're gonna Uber to, to, they comfort them or whatever they...
Okay, folks, we're getting ready, we're gonna call Lisa quick, pretty quickly, and, and go home. Great ideas, thank you. Great ideas, we're gonna, uh, one last, and then I'm gonna end this. You're lucky that I'm...
I just want to repeat what I said about, I think market will help with the parking. I just wanted to get it on, and also, you know, the council passed a while back that we did not want our bars open till five AM. This is a closed down, Ellie Mays closes eleven, I think, Slade Inn maybe stay up till, it's not, so we need to give them the best time during the day or whenever to make the money, because we don't want to stay open all night long for them to survive. And then one other thing is, we looked into, and we had a presentation from a company that runs these little beep buses...
Yeah, beep, yeah.
Which we are looking into bringing them here, which will help as well. They're little electronic buses.
It's, it's almost, it's a, it's an autonomous public transportation option.
Adam on Springs just, just started those.
Yes, yes, there, we...
And that will really help the businesses and the city.
It's really cool, we had some...
I think we, you know, we...
Yeah, we're supposed to have time.
Yes, we had some staff, some of our staff to include, went over to Orlando area, and they, they toured the facility, and they, and they saw, they actually got on the, they're, they, they're, looked like a, an oversized old school Volkswagen van, essentially, but they're autonomous.
And drives on pebbly streets?
Yes, they go, they have set, set spots that they, they stop. It's a really, really an interesting concept, and we're...
Shuttle service, basically.
And I have to work with it for all over everything.
Yes.
Right.
And you're sending with paper, my taxes are gone, collect them over.
Okay, uh, I appreciate that, I appreciate everybody's input. It's a little bit lively and a little disorderly, but you know, I don't usually allow this to happen. You know me, I run a more orderly meeting, but tonight, we needed to do this. We need to throw mud against the wall and see what stuck. Just do some brainstorming, and I appreciate all of your input. I'd like to bring this to an end, and let's do it this way. David and Kyle, please remember as best you can, and listen to the tape if you have to, jot down all the wild ideas we heard, called brainstorming. We're gonna bubble out what makes sense, and, and then we'll drive it around for a few minutes and see where we go, okay? We, we just keep working the problem till we get it solved, and we ain't there yet. All right, anything else? All right, then, what, yes ma'am, yes, yes ma'am?
One thing I wanted to mention. Let's just add it.
State legislation?
Yes, then...
Is that what it is?
Yeah, we had a couple of bills this year that come out of the legislature that could potentially have a lot of impact on the city of Cape Canaveral. One bill is called State Bill 250, you can look it up and do your own research, it's SB 250, and it came out of the 23 legislature. Basically, what SB 250 says is that if you're within 100 miles of the landfall of...
Ian or Nicole.
Ian or Nicole, which we are.
Of what?
If you're within 100 miles of the landfall point of Ian, Hurricane Ian, which we are within 100 miles, so it would affect us, that a community cannot adopt any new regulations that would place any further burden on, is it just residential development, or is it all development?
All development.
All development. We're not sure exactly what that means, our city attorney is very concerned about that. And it's, I think it's, it's in, in play for three years till 2025. So, we could, we, it could really affect what we do at this board. We might have a pretty light schedule for the next three years, possibly.
State Bill 250?
Senate Bill, Senate Bill 250. I'd encourage you to pull it up and look at it.
Required reading, what's the other one?
Uh, the other, the other item is, it's called Live, um, Live Local. It's the Live Local Act. Live Local.
Spell that last word.
L-O-C-A-L.
Live Local.
Live Local. And what Live Local says is for affordable housing, the state has preempted all local zoning and comprehensive plan requirements, as far as density and as far as height. So, there's, there's a few, there's a few more specific details in there, I'm not gonna get into all the nuts and bolts. Just, just do a Google search on the Live Local Act.
Act?
Yes, Live Local Act.
You mean that's a real government, state government act already?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. As of July 1st.
The governor signed it on July 1st, and that preempts local zoning as far as dens...
All the...
It basically allows, if a developer wants to come in and put an affordable housing project on any commercial or industrial property, we don't allow residential in our commercial and industrial districts, this act preempts a city. A developer can come in here and put a, a affordable housing project on anything commercial or anything industrial.
I'm not the world's greatest authority on this, but I have, I've written a book that gives you the origins of zoning.
Yes, well, throw all that out the window.
And it rests on a lot of case law and a lot of tradition and a lot of federal law.
Very good reading.
And so, eh, okay, we, we'll watch that one for a while, and if it gives us a fit, we'll take it to court.
Well...
It's where, where it goes.
We've already had, we've had one developer who's already looking in the city of Cape Canaveral on some commercially zoned property for an affordable housing project, so...
He's gonna use this, well, okay.
And they, they would do it under this act. But I would encourage the board to look up those two, SB 250 and the Live Local Act, and...
Jay, could you repeat, could you repeat what you said? You said, "If affordable housing was going to be built, they have to follow any restrictions."
Well, I...
Of course they have to be allowed to be built.
Yeah, but I didn't quite, it's not quite that open-ended.
All right, so say it again, so I can...
So we need to just go read, go read, we need to do some reading. Live Local Act.
Live Local Act. It's far-reaching.
All right.
As is State Bill 250.
All right, hey, life continues to get more and more exciting. SB 250, State Bill 250, and Live Local Act. So we'll continue to have fun. All right, thank you all, thank you very much. I, I, you have no idea how much you're appreciated. And with that, without further ado, I'm going to call adjourned. Let us be adjourned.
All right.
I'll second that.